Hello, I'm Mayor Drew Combs and welcome to the March 4th Special City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. We'll now conduct roll call. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. And city council chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council member Jeff Schmidt, City Council members Jeff Schmidt, Cecily Taylor, and Jennifer Wise. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Narodh Doherty, and City Court Judy Heron. City Court Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs, and again echoing a welcome to our special March 4th meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete one of the speaker cards at our tables and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature. Calling in from a landlady or a cell phone, press star nine at that time. I'd also like to make a brief announcement, we are currently recruiting for all of our committees and commissions through April 9th. If you're interested, please visit menlopark.gov/commissions. Thanks so much. Mayor Combs, may continue.
Thank you, Court Heron. The next item is closed session. City Court Heron, can you please call for public comment for closed session item C1?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs. So if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on closed session item C1, closed session with labor negotiator related to negotiations with Menlo Park Lease Sergeants Association, you are in person completing a speaker card and returning to me. If you're virtual, engaging that hand feature, and if you're calling in, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our closed session item C1. Seeing one hand. Sarah has lowered her hand. Sarah, if you wanted to make a comment on C1, please engage again. Okay. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Court Heron. With that, the city council will now adjourn to closed session and reconvene at 6:00 PM.
Okay, having our city council back at our in-person dais. Mayor Combs, you may reconvene the meeting.
Right, thank you, Corcoran. Hello, I am Mayor Drew Combs and we are re-convening the special March fourth city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city councils, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. I would like to reintroduce city council members and staff present in city council chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Jeff Schmidt, Celia Taylor and Jennifer Wise. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Nero Doherty and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So for members of the public who are in person and wish to provide a comment on tonight's agenda, we ask that you complete a speaker card at one of our back tables and return that to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, you'll engage that hand feature. And if you're calling in from a landliner cell phone, we'll ask that you press star nine at that time. As a reminder, we are recruiting for all of our advisory bodies, commissions and committees. For more information, please visit MenloPark.gov backslash commissions. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Right, thank you, Court Heron. I would like to introduce City Attorney Nero Doherty for a report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. There's no reportable action.
Thank you, City Attorney Doherty. With that, we'll move on to the study session portion of the meeting. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for presentation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for action. Again, with that, we'll move on to G1. Review, the study session item is review and discuss site selection criteria and previous evaluation of city-owned properties completed for the 2023-2031 housing element. In order to gauge the number of speakers on this item and ensure everyone has an opportunity to provide comment, I will ask City Clerk Heron to call for public comment at this time. We will then proceed to the staff presentation and following that, open this item for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So again, in order to gauge our public comment on our study session item G1 for city-owned properties completed for the 2023-2031 housing element. If you're in person, go ahead and bring those speaker cards up to us at the city clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature now. Calling in from a landliner or cell phone, please press star nine. And so again, we are just accepting our public speakers to get them in queue for our study session item G1. So in person, completing a speaker card on Zoom, engaging the hand or calling in pressing star nine. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor to introduce our principal planner, Tom Smith.
Okay, well, I'll say exactly what you said. I'll introduce Principal Planner Tom Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Combs and city council members. To reiterate what the mayor said, this evening's meeting is a study session. The city council will review and discuss the site selection process and analysis of city-owned properties that was prepared for the 2023 to 2031 housing element, which began in 2021. And staff will have the opportunity to receive direction from city council, but there will be no formal actions taken at this meeting. At the January twenty eighth city council meeting, council member Schmidt requested to agendize a discussion on the site selection criteria that was used to choose housing sites for the housing element. And at the February eleventh city council meeting, the city council directed staff to return with a review of the housing element site selection process, particularly focused on city-owned properties, especially the civic center. City council specified that no new information or site analysis was requested for this meeting. Before describing the site selection criteria, I'd like to give just a brief background on the housing element itself. The housing element is a state-required plan for the city's housing needs over an eight-year period. We're currently in the sixth eight-year cycle, which runs from 2023 to 2031. And preparation of the housing element began in 21, 2021, as I mentioned, with a number of public meetings, outreach efforts, multiple drafts and coordination with the state over a period of nearly two years. The city council first adopted the housing element in January 2023, and it was certified by the state in March 2024. The document includes goals, policies and programs to preserve, improve and develop housing for all income categories and affirmatively further fair housing. The housing element also must include a site inventory to show sufficient locations to meet what is referred to as a regional housing needs allocation. And I'll refer to that as the RENA, which is the acronym for short. So to figure out how many housing units the city needed to plan for from 2023 to 2031, the state and ABAG, the regional planning authority, provided the city with a certain number of units. And the RENA represents the housing units needed at all income levels throughout the city. And the income levels are based on area median income adjusted for household size and are updated every year by the state. So as you can see in the first row of the table on the slide, the city of Menlo Park had to plan for at least 2,946 total new units to meet its RENA with specific amounts at different income levels from very low to above moderate. Based on the recommendation from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, an additional buffer of thirty percent was included to ensure that other locations are available to construct housing if all the opportunity sites in the housing element site inventory do not develop by 2031. And the rationale for the buffer is to reduce the chances of the city falling short of meeting its RENA. So because of this, the city planned for over 3,800 total new units in the housing element. And you can see that number at the bottom line of this table. HCD maintains a housing element site inventory guidebook, and that's to help cities identify sites that can accommodate residential development. Housing opportunity sites have to meet several basic criteria to be considered suitable for housing development, and that's described in part A of the guidebook. The factors that are listed there include adequate area for housing development, zoning that allows residential uses, access to infrastructure like water, sewer and electricity, and a lack of environmental constraints that would preclude development on a site such as a floodplain. The city also has to identify which RENA income category each site is anticipated to accommodate, whether it's very low, low, moderate or above moderate income. For sites that are intended to accommodate a city's very low and low-income RENA, additional criteria apply, and those are described in section B of the HCD guidebook. And those criteria include a site area between a half an acre or ten and ten acres in size. And for sites outside of that range, the city needs to provide additional analysis, justification and actionable programs to facilitate housing development on this, on those sites during the planning period. The sites need to have a zoning that allows residential densities of at least thirty dwelling units per acre. And the locations of those lower-income RENA sites need to affirmatively further fair housing by providing housing opportunities in high resource areas. And that means areas that have high-performing schools, proximity to jobs and so on. And the sites cannot be located in areas with concentrations of segregation or poverty. HCD encourages cities to evaluate publicly-owned land for affordable housing development with the rationale that city-owned sites can reduce development costs since land acquisition often presents a significant barrier to affordable housing development in the Bay Area. And the city can help overcome certain market constraints while ensuring long-term affordability through agreements or deed restrictions and other mechanisms to ensure that affordable residential development remains affordable. As part of the housing element update, staff evaluated all forty-nine city-owned parcels to determine which locations could meet HCD's criteria and the city's housing goals. This is a map of the total forty-nine city-owned parcels. And as you can see, they're colored here in blue and they're located throughout the city. They include parks and open spaces, civic facilities, infrastructure facilities, rights of way and other types of uses. Many city-owned parcels were eliminated from consideration due to existing uses and constraints, such as parks and open spaces, active civic facilities like the fire station, a fire station or civic center, infrastructure facilities, buildings that have long-term leases beyond the eight-year planning period, sites in city council district one. The rationale for that is because of affirmatively furthering fair housing considerations and the scale and volume of recent multifamily residential development in that district. It was determined to spread the opportunities through districts two through five. Additionally, parcels were eliminated from consideration because they were either too small or regularly shaped for development, such as some parcels that run along the creek and then environmentally constrained parcels as well. The staff report attachment E shows the city-owned parcels sorted by size with the twenty-eight city-owned sites that are between a half an acre and ten acres in size identified in a box bounded by a thicker black border. And then after removing from consideration the parcels that include parks and recreation areas, civic and infrastructure facilities, buildings with long-term leases, sites in city council district one and the environmentally constrained parcels. The remaining sites available are shown in the bold text. And so it's difficult to see here, but in attachment E of the staff report, those filter down to the eight downtown parking lots. Looking more specifically at the civic center, the Burgess Park Civic Center site is a single parcel. The eastern portion, which is closest to Ravenswood Avenue where this facility is located, serves as the civic center, and that includes community facilities like the library, the police station, city hall, council chambers and the Ariaga Family Recreation Center. And then the western portion of the site bordering Burgess Drive serves as Burgess Park and includes athletic fields, playgrounds and other recreational spaces. The entire site is zoned for public facilities. At various times during preparation of the housing element, the Housing Commission, Planning Commission and City Council discussed the potential for housing on the civic center site. And across five meetings from 2021 to 2022, city council affirmed guidance not to use the civic center or parks generally as housing sites. Public comments and correspondence during the preparation of the housing element generally indicated support for excluding the civic center and including the downtown parking lots as housing element sites. If the city council would like to consider adding or modifying the existing housing elements, housing opportunity sites, staff recommends the city council provide guidance to staff on the requested sites. So that could include specific parcels, geographic areas, specific land uses, just as examples. And if additional sites are identified for study, staff would schedule a future city council study session after conducting more research on those sites. The estimated timing of a future study session would depend on the number of sites and the desired level of review. And there's a table on the right-hand side of this slide which shows three general levels of analysis that staff developed. So there may be a basic screening, which could take approximately two to three months to prepare a moderate level of analysis, which could take up to four to six months. And then a more comprehensive study of a site could take up to twelve months to complete. Looking further ahead, if any further, if any modifications to the housing element are to be proposed following a future study session, the city would need to begin coordination with HCD to discuss those sites and their viability. And then changes to housing, housing opportunity sites would also require potential general plan and zoning ordinance amendments and other discretionary actions and would need to be evaluated for environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And the timing of those actions would be independent of the timing to perform research before returning to a study session as shown on the previous slide. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and return it to you, Mayor Combs.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the, for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from the city council before we return to pub, or turn to public comment? Councilmember Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And first I want to say thanks to staff for preparing this session. Really helpful to review it at this level of granularity. I just want to go back to the evaluation of the city-owned properties slide where it says many sites were eliminated due to existing uses and constraints. So the shortened list with the parking lots, if I narrow these evaluation criteria and constraints down and we include parks and open spaces and active civic facilities, everything below that is fairly fixed. That's things like the Bellhaven Community Center or District One sites. Where the discussion might really center tonight could be around the use of parks and open spaces and active civic facilities. Is there any other, any other city-owned sites aside from parks and other things that would be eligible? Hopefully that made sense, but I think the real discussion and debate tonight is going to be around those top two evaluation criteria. Is that an accurate way to kind of look at it?
I think that accurately summarizes, I think, parks and open spaces. There may be a couple of vacant parcels, but as you mentioned, those are located in city council district one. Other than that, I think parking lots and, and open space, as you stated, would be the main criteria, main areas.
Thank you.
So an additional clarifying question. One thing you didn't mention is the idea or possibility that the city would itself acquire land. As part of the analysis, was there much thought given to that? This is the first question. And then the second question would be, and maybe it's not you, Mr. Smith, maybe it's the city manager would be like, what funds does the city have available to possibly acquire land?
I don't believe that we looked at acquisition of land as part of the evaluation of the, the housing element just because we hadn't identified a specific funding source for that. But I don't know if the city manager would like to expand on that if there's anything else.
Let's see, in terms of acquiring land, I don't recall that coming up during the four-year process. But if somebody else does, happy to kind of think about that further. And then to the second question about funds, the main, the largest fund that the city, city has is called the, the general fund. There's no designated portion of that general fund for the acquisition of land for affordable housing. City does have reserves. City council has policies about how those reserves should be used. Those are city council policies. The city council can revisit those policies, set those as they see fit. There's one fund that is related to below-market rate housing, the BMR fund. And the city reports on that on an annual basis. There's no, some of that money could be used for acquisition of funds theoretically.
Thank you. Any, any additional clarifying questions? Okay, Clerk Heron, can you call for a public comment one final time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So this will be the final call for public comment on our study session item G1. If you are in the chambers, please go ahead and bring your card up to the clerk's desk. If you are participating on Zoom, please engage that hand feature. And if you're calling in, please press star nine now. And if you're calling in, please press star nine now. All right, so I see, I think, a couple of more cards that are coming.
Clerk Heron, based on at least the hands I see raised online, I think we'll limit public comment to two minutes per speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Combs. All right, thank you all for your patience. So it looks like we have 21 speakers. And Mayor Combs, we will do that with a two-minute speaker time. So our first speaker will be Will Alsler, followed by Carrie Nicholas.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Will. I'm a resident of District Three. I'm here tonight to support the Downtown Housing Project. To tackle the housing crisis, we need to actually build homes, especially near our urban core. Parking lots one, two, and three were an excellent choice for consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity to learn more about why they were selected. I'm sure you'll hear tonight that opponents don't oppose affordable housing, just this project. I personally find that claim suspect. Many of the voices objecting here haven't spoken in favor of housing on other sites. They haven't engaged in the housing element process. When the Civic Center was previously under consideration, they were silent. They show up when development comes too close to their lives and they oppose it. That, in my view, is the full extent of their interest. Last week, I was disappointed by the council's decision on RV parking enforcement. You heard from federal employees serving our community, a postal worker, who's homeless because even a small studio here costs over $2,900 a month. During the debate, each of you spoke, and I agree with you, about the urgency of the problems that the housing crisis is causing our community. Councilman Schmidt, I appreciate your vote, and I thought it was poignant when you said that to ask for an indefinite wait while we figure it out, it doesn't feel very reasonable. And so that's kind of where my head and heart is at the moment. This is also where my head and heart are. The need for housing is urgent, and building takes time, and delays make it worse. I believe our hearts and our heads should go out just as much to the postal worker, the barista, and the retail worker as they do to business owners. I'm asking tonight, no more delays in writ litigation. Menlo Park deserves better than the Palo Alto process.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Carrie Nicholas, followed by Sean Vandere.
My name is Carrie Nicholas, and I am a Menlo Park business owner, Menlo Park homeowner, and I rent an office space in the downtown part of Menlo Park. This current City Council inherited a mess from your prior council, and that is not your responsibility. But what is your responsibility is listening to us now. In a rush against this quota, council has elected to focus only on the downtown parking lots. Mind you, these lots were originally purchased through an assessment district by the property owners with the express purpose of serving the business community. You are attempting to take these for housing. There has been a breach of trust amongst people in Menlo Park within the City Council. At some point, the city has to recognize the needs of its residents. The opposition is overwhelming, almost 4,000 signatures, 115 businesses, and in a few short days, we will have over 100,000 in funds raised that loudly speak to the frustrations that the residents feel towards the downtown site. To regain the credibility of those you represent, you simply need to go back to the drawing board that needs to include an evaluation of multiple better sites. Why would we try to wedge three towers into an already congested downtown? Better sites include the Civic Center, the USGS, which just became available, the VA site, and multiple other options that provide much more room to build not in $80 million, excuse me, $80 million parking structure. City Council has not conducted any meaningful studies to measure important impacts such as traffic, congestion, infrastructure, public schools, liability. Why is this? Why is the council putting the cart before the horse, trying to move from the RFQ to the RFP without doing any of these studies first? This is an experiment with grave consequences, and this council will be responsible for that outcome. And unfortunately, at the moment, there is not enough data and evidence that supports this decision. If the council continues with the current path, this will turn into, unfortunately, an ugly battle that will be followed by years in a courtroom. Council simply needs to pivot from downtown lots and either with their own internal staffing or residents, go back and evaluate all of these options that are on the table. With adequate studies, then the council will retain our trust. This will be a defining development of our generation and generations to come. The solution is simple: do not destroy downtown to hit a quota. This is not opposition to affordable housing. It has never been, and it never will be, despite what some in the opposition may say. This is about City Council doing their job in vetting all sites. It is not downtown. It is not on lots that were paid for by property owners through an assessment district. Don't zoning is there for a reason. We should expect more from our City Council, and I hope that you hear the voices and the overwhelming opposition to this proposal. You should actually prioritize the people that you serve, the businesses, the retailers, the residents, the property owners, and everyone else that has come to love Menlo Park. On a final note, please open Santa Cruz Avenue and let businesses in the downtown be businesses. We do not want to have the worst downtown on the peninsula. Please listen to the people you represent. I respectfully, respectfully, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker will be Sean Vandere, followed by Katie Hahn and Alex Beltramo.
Hello, Council. My name is Sean Vandere. I live on Florence Lane near downtown. I've lived in Menlo Park and in my apartment for four and a half years. Thank you for the work you're doing. I know this is very difficult. I'm here to urge you to not delay building housing. I support considering all city-owned sites for housing, and this includes the land that we're on right now. But I urge you not to backtrack on the plan for downtown housing. Housing delayed is housing denied. You all know I've been very active on this issue, and I've talked to hundreds of people in the community about the plan for downtown housing. Certainly, not everyone supports it. But there are a lot of people who support it. And there are real people who are alive right now, who are suffering because we don't have enough housing in our community. I heard a local restaurant owner talk about employees who commute two hours each day, each way, to serve our community food. I talked with a Trader Joe's employee who signed our petition, saying, "I'm signing because I want to live closer to where I work." Housing delayed is housing denied. And there's a lot of just pure numbers of people who support this, especially amongst people who cannot afford to purchase a home, people like me and my neighbors. These are the names of over 300 neighbors who signed a petition supporting building homes downtown. That's not going to work. You get the picture. Housing delayed is housing denied. Please don't delay building housing downtown. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Hahn, followed by Alex Beltramo and Andrea Chan.
Hi, City Council. My name is Katie Hahn. I am a resident of Menlo Park. I did just hear that comment, "Housing delayed is housing denied." And by moving forward with the parking lots, you're delaying housing. If you guys looked at Civic Center and truly considered it as an option, knowing that you would have the support of 3,000 people who signed our petition, you would be in a much better position. There is going to be litigation. There are going to be tons of people not supporting your option, and you would immediately flip the story. And I think there's a lot of confusion here with people saying, "Oh, the people who don't want downtown don't want affordable housing." I support affordable housing. Everyone on the 3,000-person list supports affordable housing. I also wanted to ask you about the cost and what's been done to analyze the cost of a giant parking structure in downtown Menlo Park. I'm sure most of you read the Almanac article over the weekend that analyzed and compared the downtown Palo Alto parking structure as a comp to what would happen in downtown Menlo Park. How are we going to afford building a parking structure of that mass? It's not possible. I feel like there has been no cost analysis done on the Civic Center compared to downtown Menlo Park. And I think that's an injustice to the city, of the people who live here. The third thing I wanted to say is that in the presentation, people said that, or this gentleman said that, people were very against the Civic Center. And I think we have to recognize that this is a very different time. In '21, '22, people were saying Civic Center or nothing. Now, I think again, you would garner a lot of support. If you, you would certainly have my support. If you move it to Civic Center, I would be the first one out there. I would be championing this effort. And I think that saying that, you know, we're not going to do it because people are going to be equally unsupportive is not true. This is also a 29-acre, what did they say, 29-acre facility? I'm unclear on why we couldn't rebuild this building and go up. I'm unclear on why we couldn't take a portion of the field. I'm unclear on why we couldn't take the pond outside. There are a lot, there's a ton of area here that could be used. And I mean, the parking lot as a, should be studied. I have, I come here all the time with my kids. I have never, ever seen this parking lot nearly at the capacity that I see the ones in downtown Menlo Park. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Combs.
Our next speaker is Andrea Chan. Our next speaker is Andrea Chan, or I'm sorry, Alex Beltramo. Apologies, Alex. Andrea Chan, and then Sheri Zosowski.
Good evening, Council. This afternoon, I did an experiment. I pretended to be a fireman or a teacher or someone on a budget looking for an inexpensive apartment in Menlo Park with the hope of finding something near downtown. I did what most people would do in that situation. I went onto Zillow. First, I searched for one-bedroom apartments priced at $2,800 a month or less. I found that there are 15 such apartments currently available in Menlo Park. Of those 15, three are within 200 yards of downtown. A fourth is 500 yards from downtown. So four out of 15 were a short walk from downtown. I then searched for two-bedroom apartments priced at $3,500 a month or less. There are 11 such apartments available in Menlo Park. Of those 11, 10 of them are within half a mile of downtown. So between those two searches for one-bedroom and two-bedrooms, of the 26 least expensive apartments available today in all of Menlo Park, 14 of them, over half, are within half a mile of downtown. If you're wondering, of those 14, 11 of those are west of the El Camino. That's just one day. That's just what's on, that's today. That's just on what's on Zillow. But it's reflective of the fact that our downtown is surrounded by hundreds and hundreds, probably thousands of apartments, most of which of them are, in fact, affordable. I think they've been referred to as naturally affordable. So this idea that there are all these people who work in Menlo Park and would like to live downtown but aren't doing so because there's nothing affordable, I think that's a false narrative. At least, I don't know. It's worth questioning. Yes, it would absolutely be nice for there to be more affordable housing downtown and walking distance from downtown. That can be done through upzoning. It can be done by using the Civic Center. But please, do not convert our critical downtown parking lots into apartments. We do not need to do that. We do not want to do that. You've been told by those in favor of this plan that you need to show strong leadership to push this forward. But define 95, 90% of your constituents is not leadership. I don't know what it is, but it's not leadership. And so please, represent the people of Menlo Park. Find all better alternatives for affordable housing. The Civic Center, 1283 Willow Road, 2400 Brianna, USGS, VA, I don't know. But please, not the parking lots. Do not sacrifice our downtown. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Andrea Chan, followed by Sheri Zosowski and Billy McNair.
Hi, I live downtown Menlo Park. And first of all, you know, I commend the different opinions here that is trying to be reason in what they are saying and not polarize. And I see some of the discussion on social media on Nextdoor, and we really, you know, don't want a polarized community. And so I commend us for, you know, listening to each other because we are all coming from a place where we want a good community and we want affordable housing. So from talking to some of my neighbors, you know, I understand the need for, certainly for affordable housing and for a crying need very soon. There are some questions that, from my neighbors, that I would like the City Council to better communicate. So, you know, where is going to be the public parking? Because I see Spring Line, right? I mean, where there is lots of underground parking, most of it is, you know, you know, most of the time, you, there is no problem finding plenty of parking underneath. So please answer the question, what is going to happen with parking for the local business? Second question is traffic. It's already congested, especially on Willow, bringing more people into Menlo Park. How are we going to deal with the traffic? And the third question is, it's this 3,830 units through the 10 years or so. Can you tell us what is the plan? I mean, this, if you take the first lot, what is the second allotment? What is the third? How are we going to plan it out for the 10 years to meet the housing element? So those are the things that I would like more communication and quickly, because, yeah, we need the problem solved. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sheri Zosowski, followed by Billy McNair and Catherine Dumont.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and Council members. I've just been thinking about what a lovely community we really have. I just had a nice conversation with our Secretary Judy and with our planner Tom. And Justin and I go way back, as do I with Drew and even Betsy. And I really want our community to come together on this. To me, it seems fairly simple that we all acknowledge that our housing element, no matter how much time and effort was put into it, was seriously flawed. That's why the community has galvanized around the issue of the downtown parking lots. And it, we have a golden opportunity now to fix it. Why a golden opportunity? It's only the beginning of 2025. We have till 2031. We don't have terrible time pressure on us. And we just got an A+ on a report card, right, Betsy? We just got, so Sacramento's happy with us. So it's time for us now to actually put our heads together and figure out what to do. In addition, I'm not sure if you're all aware, but the federal government has just rescinded AFFH. So there's no more HUD funding for it. There's no more HUD requirement for it. You can look it up online. It's even in the federal register now. So we're free now to come back to common sense decisions on our housing. And I have just one question for you. What makes more sense to you, Council members? To put affordable housing in a city-owned vacant lot at Willow and Ivy in District One or to put it in the downtown parking lots where it will result in two-thirds of our businesses closing and over 1,000 people losing their jobs? Which one makes more sense? Thank you.
Next speaker is Billy McNair, followed by Catherine Dumont and Chris Joy.
Hi, my name is Billy McNair, and I was raised in Menlo Park. I raised my three children in Menlo Park. I'm a property owner in Menlo Park, and I'm a business owner in Menlo Park. My office looks out all day long at the parking lot between Crane and Chestnut, so I stare at that lot, you know, the better part of 10 hours a day when I'm in my office. So the reason I'm speaking here tonight is for a couple of points I want to make. One is, I'm a proponent of affordable housing. It should be here on the Civic Center site. It's close or closer to the same public transportation. It alleviates people having to navigate across El Camino to get to that public transportation. And this site, in my opinion, is heavily underutilized from the parking lot by the library. The new buildings could be built with the library itself, housing is part of that. But the parking lot, you know, part of the reason I want to speak as well is when I was here at the meeting in January, I was shocked by the number of people, many of which do not live in Menlo Park and are with organizations from San Mateo and elsewhere, that characterize these parking lots as underutilized surplus parking. I can assure you from looking at them all day long, these parking lots are full from 8:00 AM till 7:00 PM. I have clients that come to my office multiple times a day, they text me, I'm circling, I'm looking for parking. So these are not surplus parking lots that are underutilized. The other thing that I would say is, and somebody mentioned this in January, was it would be shocking to me to make a decision of this magnitude where for probably $2,000 in two weeks of time, block the 13 driveways into the parking lots. You've already got the orange barricades on Santa Cruz. Move them and put them at each driveway, and see what happens in downtown Menlo Park if those three parking lots run available. See what happens to parking, see what happens to the businesses, see what happens to congestion, and it's the simplest test in the world. It'll tell you right there. If nothing changes, maybe you're right. Take the parking lots. If downtown becomes a disaster, which I can assure you it will, then that'll show you what will happen if you move forward with this. And lastly, what I would say is, I was with one of the principals of Coffee Bar this morning in a business meeting, and his words to me were, if this gets approved, Coffee Bar will be out the next day. And Coffee Bar, I think we could all agree, is probably the one true success and vibrant business in downtown Menlo Park today. You go there at any time of the day, it's packed, every table's full, there's vibrancy, the same as Barone, and you've got one of the leading businesses that's led this recharge in downtown Menlo Park over the last five years, saying they will be gone. So I would just encourage you, we're all proponents of housing, I mean, in the housing business, let's put it here on Civic Center. It makes most sense, reopen it, and I understand you're in a difficult position, I appreciate that, but I think you don't need to rush to judgment on this.
Our next speaker will be Catherine Dumont, followed by Chris Joy and William Hinson.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Combs. So take it back a year and a half to 2023, talked to a lot of folks downtown, we're in the housing element process, and talked to a lot of people who live downtown and who signed a petition to city council to upzone downtown to 100 units per acre. As Councilmember Taylor noted at the time, it, 100, the higher density is good enough for Bayfront and Bellhaven, it's certainly good enough for the rest of the city and So one of the things we were facing at that time also was that we did not have an approved housing element, and we already had a builder's remedy at our doorstep. So I appreciate all the work that council has done in getting our city's housing element approved, and a keystone of that was the upzoning of the downtown and the idea of being to build affordable housing downtown. People are jumping ahead about solutions to the parking, and certainly we need to consider that, and that will come with time. We're not talking about building anything in the next few weeks, probably not even the next couple of years, because we have a long process to go through. We have a lot of time to consider options. I'm actually volunteering with Palo Alto's Transportation Management Program, and I've seen a lot of great work that they're doing on subsidizing transportation alternatives for folks who live in Palo Alto. They have just recently raised the income limit to $100,000. So folks who work in offices, like our folks who work in my dental and medical offices here downtown, qualify to stop driving their cars and get a pass for a bus, train, even a loaner bike, for those who want to take another car off the road. And it's been a very successful program in Palo Alto, it keeps getting more funding, and we're, it's one of the things we're using to mitigate the removal of parking along El Camino Real in Palo Alto to, for the bike lanes. So I'm really, I'm a former resident in Palo Alto, so I'm still, I'm, you know, very interested in what goes on there. Live in Menlo Park now, I have for five years, and I'd really like to see this project move forward. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Chris Joy, followed by William Hinson, and then Carl.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. My name is Chris Joy, and I lived on the peninsula here for 44 years and have office space on Oak Grove and University Avenue, so be right in the middle of where you proposed to, to build. For sure, we need more housing, it's very, very important, but, sorry, wrong glasses. You know, the vast majority of people in this town don't want high-density housing in the downtown, you know, parking, parking lots, for obvious reasons. Just driving here tonight, the traffic was unbelievable. So where do we build it? So I think we need to think outside the box. You know, my definition of being smart is the ability to wiggle out of a trap. You guys are in a trap. And I think, how about skyscrapers east of the Bay Shore? How about using the money that would be used to build a parking structure to purchase space optimal in terms of traffic impact, environmental impact, and all that sort of stuff? And that's about it. I echo, you know, Carrie Nicholas, much more eloquent than I am, and, you know, please think carefully, think outside the box, and we can come up with a great solution. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be William Hinson, followed by Carl and Rich Johnson.
My name is William Hinson. Just to comment a little bit off the topic, and that is, I might encourage the council and the city staff to review their presentation effectiveness in this chamber. First of all, the volume, I found very low, except this station. And secondly, the visual aids are really unreadable to almost anybody in the audience. And so for this kind of study session in city government, it seems to me that all people can do to have any amount of effective input is to make sure they read and go through the advanced material that is sent out, just like council goes through the advanced material is sent out. Understand what the points are, think of challenges, if there are, to these points, and bring them up in this public comment, because otherwise, the time spent on the oral presentation, good as it was, is not effective. It's not bulletized enough to condense down from the otherwise available material. So, comment for your consideration. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Carl, followed by Rich Johnson and Jenny Michelle.
Hello, Council. Guess you can hear me. So, dear council members, I've invested in Menlo Park through purchasing a home here many years ago. I'd actually purchased it with my wife, we saved up quite a bit for that home, and we've been patronizing the shops for years, the groceries, the restaurants, et cetera. And we chose, if you call it, Menlo Park based upon how pretty it was, how nice it was, and how laid out it was, and how much room we had with regards to parks, and how well-planned it was, quite honestly, it wasn't cookie cutter. And we found that, you know, in paying for the schools, the police department, the fire, the council, et cetera, we spent a lot of money, and we knew that we'd have to spend a lot of money for that, but, but still, we enjoyed where we lived. And I have to say, with regards to the proposed plan of downtown, I respectfully request that the town not build the densified housing in the proposed downtown location. It's really shoehorning the homes into a parking lot that, to me, isn't going to fit, and I think it's going to be forever damaging to Menlo Park's character. Menlo Park, as a Menlo Park resident, I regularly patronize the downtown, but I just don't think it's going to fit in there. As I said, you've heard from the majority of the speakers, and I've been kind of keeping tabs on that, about like 13 to 3, that there's a lot of people that are not interested in putting it into the downtown. We realize that there is a need for housing, and I think there are several other options, and you've heard them, you've heard them tonight, so it's nothing new here, but negotiating a deal possibly with SRI on that. I read the article, I guess there's 63 acres, of which 29, 34 acres are for open space, 29 of it's relegated to open space, 34 is going to be for building, sorry, 34 acres for open building. That's about 1.48 million square feet. And I know that there's already some plans for that, but that's in the incoat stages, and this is a time when, if you're ever going to negotiate for that, I think now's the time to start at least looking into that. Like people buy, you know, let's say, green credits, and they're not near a grid, they're not near a solar grid, they're not near a wind farm, they buy those solar credits. We would be buying it right in our hometown, not from a solar grid far away. We're buying this property right next to us, in our hometown. And if that is not negotiable, or if that doesn't work out, but I would say really put the effort into, into doing that. The second part would be putting them on the Civic Center. And those proposed parking lots seem logical. It's half a block from the train station, you know, one block to restaurants, you get Spring Line, you get two blocks from Safeway, Trader Joe's, et cetera. So it's, it's quite a good location, and it does seem a lot more logical than putting it in downtown, quite honestly, close to the tennis courts, et cetera. So if you could please consider that, I'd very appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rich Johnson, followed by Jenny Michelle and Carmen Coricchio.
See if I can read my own handwriting here. Good evening, council members and staff, following up on the meeting on January 14th. I've lived in Menlo Park past 33 years, raised my three boys here, none of them can afford to live in Menlo Park. So I'm pro-housing, I'm actually a developer myself, but not in Menlo Park, and I'm trying to build 60 houses down in San Jose, and in the thick of the builder's remedy, SB 330, HCD, and I know all about it, I know the pressure that you're under. There is a way through this, but destroying our downtown is not the way. So you probably recently saw the article in the Almanac, I mentioned when I last stood up here, the cost of replacing a parking garage. It's at least $50 million, at least $50 million. Palo Alto just went through it, they proved it out, call Swinneton, get a bid, see what it's going to cost today, it's going to be more than it cost in Palo Alto. The, the building type that would be necessary to squeeze the type of product that you're thinking about putting on the downtown parking lots, it's, it's going to be a smaller footprint therefore, it's going to be a taller building. A taller building means a higher standard of construction, type 1 and type 3 construction. You can't afford to do that with low-income housing, the math doesn't work. And then you'll layer in, oh, by the way, Mr. Nonprofit Developer, can you please build us this $50 million garage over here? There's no money for that. I handed out an article to the clerk here, they'll hand out, I just found it today, there are 44,000, 44,000 housing units in the backlog, they're approved in the state of California, there's no funding for them. So why do we think that our low-income housing project with a $50 million public parking garage is going to step ahead of those 44,000 units? It's not. What gets funded is five-story wood frame construction, maybe six-story wood frame construction over concrete with a surface parking or no parking. We can't afford to just rip up the downtown and, and build, you know, whatever parking the low-market rate units need, together with replacing our 600 spaces, will destroy our downtown. It just doesn't work. There's no money for it. See if I can get my notes to come back up here. So I talked about my news article, Civic Center's so much more logical. I just, I just paced out, if you go outside of the parking lots here, from the back of the bike lane to the fence along Caltrain, we got 42 feet of space. You could put hundreds of parking spaces all the way down Alma. You get beyond the center there, where the skateboard park is, it widens to 62 feet. There's a hole, there's about a mile, I don't, not measured it, but there's a mile of dead space. You can put as many parking spaces along there as you want to, to service the Civic Center, and then take the Civic Center parking lots and build maybe a brand-new library, as others have talked about, housing above. That's where, that's where the housing should be, it should not be in downtown, and you're wasting time and money and resources because it doesn't work anyway. So that's what I've got to say. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Jenny Michelle, followed by Carmen Coricchio, and then Adina Levin.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, native-born and raised here, living in District 3, a recovering homeless Menlo Park teacher. Personal comments: Thanks for making this information available to the residents and stakeholders who are now engaged in the housing element. It's important to keep talking and engaging with one another. I learn from y'all. Also, I think it's important to remember that our housing element is certified by HCD. The process in which it takes to go back to this state to amend our housing element opportunity sites is daunting mid-cycle. I actually don't recommend pursuing this. Further, AB 1886 is now enacted as state law, and we cannot self-certify. The state must sign off on the viability of the sites as a realistic site that would be improved upon with occupancy certs before 2031. It takes us several years in order to just rezone, like, the downtown area for density housing. It's highly unlikely, unlikely that we'll be able to make a selling case for ourselves that-
Can you hold on one, excuse me, can you, excuse me, at the back of the room? Please, no, no conversations, let's be respectful. You may continue.
Okay, thanks. It's highly unlikely that we'll be able to make a selling case for ourselves that other sites will be zoned and approved upon in the next six years. Affirmatively furthering housing is building housing near resources and stuff, stuff that District 1 does not have. So it's important that we build west of El Camino in this current cycle, as we said we would. The opportunity sites that the opponents have cited are not in line with the state requirements, and demonstrates how much neighbors don't understand affirmatively furthering fair housing. Fostering housing development west of El Camino is the key, yes. We must foster housing in our resource-rich areas. And lastly, I have a serious health condition, guys, I take public transit, that's how I get around. I'm not legally authorized to drive a vehicle, so I challenge you to get out of your car, it's actually really good for you, and walk, it's okay, you can do it, I believe in you. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Carmen Coricchio, followed by Adina Levin, and then Brittany Baxter.
Carmen, you should be able to engage the microphone at this time. So tonight, many speakers have mentioned the Almanac blog post contributed by Dana Hendrickson.
I have you restart, we couldn't hear the first part.
Oh, sure. Tonight, many speakers have mentioned the Almanac blog post contributed by Dana Hendrickson, and I want to recommend that everyone who's interested in this matter, who's not already taken the time to read Dana's articles, please take a look, because they were incredibly informative to me. So what I- So what I first want to say is that Menlo Park and Atherton residents have already demonstrated a desire for more dining establishments coming out of COVID. And we're really lucky to have four new businesses. Loretta just opened in February, we have Clark Seafood, which is opening this year, we have Wine Bar and Cafe, which is opening this year, a new Korean restaurant. And this is a demonstration that the business owners are recognizing the opportunity in Menlo Park and want to invest in Menlo Park as it is today. And this is wonderful validation. The council should feel proud to be representing this gem of a community that's showing such a promising turnaround from COVID that other cities would be overjoyed to have and would invite this type of development with open arms. So the other sign of this is that losing five hundred and fifty-six parking spaces that represent almost half of the eleven hundred and eighty-five total spaces in these lots would be detrimental to these business owners. The business owners would experience lower revenues, profits, returns on their investments, and these investments directly feed into the city revenue. Downtown workers would lose their jobs. And who's going to employ the new residents of the downtown housing project if we don't have places for them to work? Building owners would experience more longer vacancies, which translates into lower property values. Reduced sales tax revenues will jeopardize city services and future investments in infrastructure. These very establishments are providing the jobs and rely on sales to support their own families. So why is there a value and contribution to the community not being taken into consideration? When you put business owners out of business, it means they can't pay their mortgages. And where would they live when their moderate income plummets to very low income? We've talked a lot about the cost of the parking spots, I'm not going to get into that. But here's another thing that I want to mention, that affordable housing households will need one or more vehicles per household themselves. There's not enough jobs for these residents to work downtown. And consider the impact when a large percentage of the downtown businesses close. Caltrain only services the east part of the peninsula. So it's not going to provide adequate transportation for people who presumably would live in this housing project to get to work. And how are they going to get their kids to school, daycare, run errands that most of us in this room require a car to do when we're raising our families, caring for parents, living in a community? I just want to say, the Civic Center is so close to downtown, there is no meaningful difference between the two locations. So let's be sensible about this, it's closer, there's more space, it would offer space for a children's center, a new library, it's greener space. You would actually be doing a benefit to everyone by moving forward with this varied location. And finally, I just want to say, Cecilia, you stated in the January thirtieth meeting that the core of our work is not community engagement. And it's something I believe that needs to change. So at our next priority meeting, it's something we need to talk about because it comes up at every project. More than thirty-three hundred residents and business owners have signed a petition to protect downtown Menlo Park. And we want to know, why is it taking so long to get the community engaged?
Ms. Carrillo, you're well over.
Okay, thank you.
This evening, but we do need to be mindful, thank you.
That's all, thank you so much for your time.
And I meant liberal in a time allotment sense, not a political sense.
Our next speaker will be Adina Levin, followed by Brittany Baxter and Sarah Zolweg.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, I live near downtown and wanted to thank City Council and staff for this presentation that was informative and it really talked about the robust process that the city went through and that eventually led to the choosing of the downtown sites, including the half a dozen meetings over a couple of years that contemplated and then ultimately ruled out the Civic Center sites. You know, what wasn't in the staff report was really a lot of vocal pushback to that. You know, for honesty, I was one of the people who spoke up in favor of the Civic Center sites at the time. But there were people who hated the idea very strongly and wanted to do a ballot measure in order to be able to disallow that permanently. The thing that the City Council, that the staff report did not cover is as much of the timeline and where we are in the housing cycle and what the consequences will be if we fall behind. We don't have a full eight years, things start to get streamlined if we fall behind half the way through the cycle. And if we pull out some major sites that we anticipated and then are going to take even longer, I think we risk getting decertified. The Civic Center, I think, is good to contemplate for future years. However, the Civic Center site has playing fields and civic buildings. It will take years, it took four years to plan the Bell Haven Community Center. It would take years to repurpose the Civic Center. We can't afford to fall behind, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Brittany Baxter, followed by Sarah Zolweg, and then Skip Hilton.
Hi, good evening, this is Brittany Baxter. I own a home in D three in walking distance to downtown, I walk downtown often, really love being able to do that. I followed, oh, let's see, are you able to hear me? It says, okay, sorry. I followed the housing limit process for several years and I just wanted to speak in support of the exhaustive process that got us where we are today, as outlined in that presentation, the staff report, as the previous commenter Adina mentioned. I don't think it's worth delaying our downtown plans or giving affordable housing providers reasons to hesitate in responding to the RFQ or the eventual RFP, because those are both the steps of the process that will get us answers to a lot of the questions that are coming up tonight. A lot of those things that are looming large in people's minds, like what happens to parking and transportation and fire safety and all that kind of stuff. There are no proposals yet, so that's the process by which we would get those proposals. And so not only are the homes downtown the right thing to do for our community and for our workforce, but also like Adina just mentioned, there are consequences citywide if we don't meet the arena allocations, if we don't kind of stay on track throughout the planning cycle. Again, I think we've all seen what those consequences are. And on the flip side, I think this kind of downtown project can work really well. It's one we've seen work already in other vibrant downtowns like San Carlos, Burnley Game, San Mateo, and Mountain View. All of those cities have turned downtown parking lots into housing and I think it's worked really well. We visit, you know, San Carlos a lot, we end up parking a lot in the one like parking lot that they turned into housing there, it's a really great community amenity. And so I'm just excited for our downtown to be similarly vibrant with those kinds of amenities here. I do kind of see this request to look at Civic Center as a delay and distraction tactic, given what happened last time, a lot of pushback, thousands of signatures, ballot measure threatened, like Adina mentioned. And I do think the parks are really well utilized. I was just at the Duck Pond earlier today, it's a really popular spot with young families. And I do, you know, know a lot of other people that I chat with who frequent the park frequently are really busy right now with kids' bedtime and routines and things like that, and so aren't able to call in. But just wanted to voice support for this educational opportunity that we have and encourage us to keep moving forward with the plan. Thanks so much.
Our next speaker is Sarah Zolweg, followed by Skip Hilton, and then Kevin Cunningham.
Hi, everyone, my name's Sarah Zolweg. I live in downtown Menlo Park, District Four. And I'm thrilled that the City Council is giving this such thorough and serious consideration. And I'm speaking tonight to voice my support for moving forward with affordable housing on the city parking lots without delay. Our community is bleeding families. I've lost multiple neighbors in the last two years to more affordable communities because they couldn't afford to stay here with their growing families. The parking lots are, as they are now, are really inefficient use of space in a prime downtown area. And there are more creative ways to address parking in our downtown. We have an opportunity to lower development costs for affordable housing by utilizing these parking lots and to help bring more foot traffic and energy into our sleeping downtown by locating people near businesses. This is also a way for us to comply with the housing element laws and avoid the builder's remedy, which I think we would all be pretty unhappy about. This is a really wonderful opportunity for us to address the affordable housing shortage and make Menlo Park a more thriving community. And I really hope that the council moves this development on the city parking lots forward as quickly as possible. And I would like to, I am completely in agreement with previous speakers who have said that a lot of the opposition to this really seems to be delay tactics. And I hope that the City Council will keep this moving forward. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Skip Hilton, followed by Kevin Cunningham, and then Keith Quiggins.
Hello, City Council, thanks for the additional study session to review how we arrived at these potential housing sites. I'm Skip Hilton, thirty-one-year resident of Menlo Park and homeowner for twenty-seven years over in District Two. As I've shared at other public meetings on the topic, I was lucky enough to participate in the initial downtown visioning sessions conducted by Menlo Park over a decade ago, which informed our downtown specific plan adopted in 2012, as well as the more recently adopted housing element update. During that process, hundreds of residents from across the city came together to participate in dozens of workshops, design charrettes, zoning discussions, and smart growth planning activities. We knew back then that the more development would be coming to Menlo Park, as this is a great place to live and work. And so the goal was to manage the growth in a logical manner that would enhance our city. As I recall from those planning sessions, there was overwhelming agreement that the downtown parking plazas would be a great option for development, including housing, due to the proximity of public transit and to locate more residents downtown so they can patronize our local businesses. It is my understanding that any public parking that will be used for housing there would be largely replaced with underground parking, just like we have now at Spring Line at thirteen hundred El Camino Development and at Stanford Housing at five hundred Middle. I visit these properties annually and as a customer of the local businesses, I find the underground parking abundant, safe, and convenient, just as it is when parking underneath Kepler's and Cafe Baroni. I'm sure we can do the same here. As the presentation covered, the state requires our city, and we've agreed on our HEU, to distribute new housing across Menlo Park as much as possible. And I don't want to be divisive here, but nearly all of the recently planned and completed affordable housing is on the east side of El Camino in Districts One, Two, and Three, and many not well-served by public transit. Meanwhile, there's been very little new affordable housing proposed or built west of El Camino in Districts Four and Five. Finally, I want to say if this study session is going to reconsider housing sites on parks or public facilities like the Civic Center and Burgess, then I would think you have to consider all city-owned sites. And that includes Sharon Park, Nealon Park, Jacklisle Park, Fremont Park, Stanford Hills Park. Now, I don't personally think we should build on our parks and our public open space, but if you are going to open it up to that, then I think you will need to consider sites fairly across our entire city. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Kevin Cunningham, followed by Keith Quiggins.
Oh, hello, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Kevin.
Great, well, thank you, Council, and thank you for the opportunity. And I want to touch on a couple of points here, and it was mentioned earlier. I think it's really important not to bury the headline. I think whatever side of the subject you're on, I think we all are unified in support of affordable housing in Menlo Park. It's not accurate to say that the people that oppose the downtown lots are against affordable housing. We know it's important, we know it's needed, we know you as a council were put in a difficult position and you're trying to react. But, you know, the comment that delayed housing is housing denied, or it's going to be difficult to approach the state and modify this. Unfortunately, those aren't good reasons to adequately do a thorough vetting of all viable city-owned lots. This is, as Carrie mentioned, it's going to be the development of our generation and it's going to impact all of us long after we're gone. So unfortunately, we're in the spot where frankly, I think the plan that was released and notified to people in the fall and then released, unfortunately, it was a half-baked plan. And I think what you're seeing by the enormous opposition is that it has far more questions than answers. We're issuing an RFQ, but within that RFQ, we've got a one-sentence line item that asks developers to foot, not what, trust me, is a fifty-million-dollar garage, it's a seventy to eighty-million-dollar garage. This is not a simple, I hear the Civic Center argument a lot, I understand it, but this is not a Civic Center versus downtown argument. This is the city needs to take the step to go back to the drawing board, consider all city-owned lots, and then also be creative and incorporate people outside of the city for private-owned lots. The USGS site is a seventeen-acre lot, which is going for sale for about eighty, eighty-five million, the same cost of the garage, why not parcel that off? I think what's important to understand is the city has an obligation to listen to its stakeholders. Your stakeholders have spoken out loudly, in five days, they've raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and it's coming in daily. There's almost four thousand people that have signed the petition versus four hundred for the Go Menlo, I believe. You need to do the right thing and take a step back. This will be on your resumes forever and look at other options outside of downtown that have more questions than answers. And if it goes the way we know it's going to go, it will decimate the downtown ecosystem forever. Please do the right thing, take a step back, evaluate all sites on a level playing field that are better options than downtown. We can't move forward with downtown when the repercussions are so grave. The outreach that you're getting is a direct result of a half-filled plan. That is why so many people oppose this and this group is funded to deal with this with the city legally for the next several years. Please consider this and do the right thing for your stakeholders. Put your stakeholders and citizens above a nameless, faceless government quota that you can work around, we can do it together, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Keith Quiggins.
Hi, City Council, Keith Quiggins, I'm a business owner in downtown Menlo Park and also the president of the Menlo Park Design District. I did speak at the last City Council meeting and I wanted to reemphasize a few things from that meeting. You know, Kevin just mentioned about the USGS property that's listed now for eighty-five million, a parking garage is at least eighty million. I'd rather see money spent on buying that property than building a parking garage. One of the things that I talked about with Betsy in her Betsy in the Park series of meetings, which is great, is that, you know, you want to give away these parking lots for, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty years, whatever, and then there's no taxes coming back from that, that is completely ridiculous. No business ever gets away with that. Another thing about parking garages, to be honest, I've talked to several women and women do not like parking garages because they fear being attacked when they're trying to go to a business. And I can tell you, my business on Santa Cruz, with Mademoiselle Colette being four doors away from me, that it's almost too far for people to go to Mademoiselle Colette from parking in front of my store. I think that, you know, Amazon has destroyed enough mom-and-pop businesses over the last decade. I don't think that we really need to destroy more by putting these apartments in downtown when the Civic Center is a much better location, or USGS, or SRI. And, you know, we can save our downtown, rebuild it, do an awesome facade abatement program, which we've talked about before. Do smart planning, don't rush this, don't make the wrong decision. Thank you.
Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Cole, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Erin, and thank you to everyone who provided public comment. I'll bring it back to the dais to see if there is, first, any questions from, any questions as a result of public comment to staff? And if not, we can, are there, Jennifer Wise, I mean, Councilmember Wise.
Thank you. So thank you to everyone who provided a public comment. I am wondering, so in the section, page fourteen on next steps, it says the city would need to coordinate with HCD, you know, if there would be an interest in amending the housing element. And I know we've heard from some residents tonight around that. Could we get some more color as to what that would mean and what that would look like in that process?
Sure, I think it would be site-specific, our conversations with HCD. But they would want to engage with us on, there are certain factors that they're looking for. And so going through the criteria that I listed in the presentation. And in addition, we have to demonstrate the feasibility of development during the planning period through 2031. And so a lot of that conversation would be back and forth with them about providing enough evidence that a site could potentially be developed with affordable housing before 2031 in order to be incorporated. And then just making sure that that's still, you know, there's a lot of number- Um, and then just making sure that that's still, you know, there's a lot of numbers in the housing element, a lot of, uh, references that would need to be double checked and make sure that everything is fully updated and all the numbers match up at the end. And so when we went through the housing element process, we had a few drafts back and forth with housing, with, with HCD. And so, um, we may end up in that sort of process again, if, if we were to amend it.
So it sounds like if we are unable to adequately demonstrate that we can, um, complete the project by 2031, it will not be approved by HCD.
Potentially, uh, yes, it needs to be realistically able to be developed within this planning period in order to be incorporated in the housing element.
Vice Mayor Nash?
A lot of, of the commenters tonight have brought up the USGS property. Could you please, um, say something about that property and other private properties, please?
Sure. The USGS site specifically is, um, a site that's included in our housing element inventory. And during the process of looking at various opportunity sites, um, over that 18 month period, the discussion that came out of that, the direction that we got from city council, uh, was to look at a portion of that site. So it's 17 acres. I think that was mentioned previously by a commenter. The idea was to look at up to five acres developable. Um, and I think we had assigned the density of 40 dwelling units per acre, so approximately 200 units. And then there was a desire, uh, to coordinate with the school district on a school site for up to 10 acres. And so between, um, that five acres of housing, 10 acres of the school, that leaves about two acres of the site. So there was a lot of discussion around that and it did end up, uh, becoming incorporated into the housing element and counts towards the numbers that we, um, received certification for.
Thank you. And then, um, what would it take for those units to actually be built?
It depends on, um, the purchaser of the site. We would have to engage with them in discussions and negotiations. The site right now is zoned for public facilities and so, um, it's likely, depending on who purchases, purchases the land, they would potentially want to rezone it to something else. And so there would be discussions around that, um, the development of plans. Um, and through that back and forth, we would come up with a, a development plan that way with them.
What I'm getting at is, um, essentially this is private land that the city would either have to purchase or, um, once it is purchased, work with a, the property owner. And there is no likelihood that it would become 100% affordable housing. Or actually, could you, um, discuss whether or not it would become affordable housing?
Sure. You're correct in that it, the, the buyer would be a private buyer, would be private land. Um, and so there wouldn't be the same ability that, that we have with city owned land to set the different parameters, um, ensure the uses of the land. There, the, the buyer would likely have something in mind that they'd want to do with the land. Um, and so that would, that would play into the process. It's not as clean as looking at city owned sites that we control.
And so we cannot require that they build affordable housing on private land?
There would, there would likely be, um, a requirement for inclusionary housing through a BMR program. And currently that's, that's a 15% for a site like this. But beyond that, no, we couldn't require 100% affordable housing on the site.
Thank you.
And I, I would imagine beyond the inclusionary housing requirements, any, um, additional units would probably be based on us removing the, the school requirement on, on 10 acres. So just, just to like, you know, there, there may be some legal room or leverage there, but I'm sure it's not like, give us hundreds of affordable housing, give 10 acres to the school district. At some point, we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to choose. This, I see your hand. This is not that part of the meeting. I'm sorry. But, uh, are there, uh, Councilmember Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So I have a series of questions and comments, but I think I'll just do the first one now, just to kind of get us rolling. So I, I want to spend a minute, and I have a question at the end of this about sort of where we are today. Because one of the things that I've been hearing as a new council member, and even before, as I was paying attention to this, is we're not listening as city council members, we're not hearing people ever since November. So I want to say a couple of things to dispel a couple of myths. We're here tonight, this isn't a delaying tactic. We're here tonight because we did hear this latest round of feedback. This is educational, this is studying, but this is a result of hearing the voices of the people in this room and the people that were here before. I think it's really important that we, as much as possible, move beyond opinions and into facts. And what I mean by that is just some comments that I've heard tonight and over the, the amount of time. One is, you know, we're in this trap, um, of what the state has required us to do. And we're not in a trap. I mean, we are following a process that the state has required every city and every county to go through. We, we're committed to 1,166 very low income and low income units. It's not a trap. It's not a trick. It's, you know, and we don't need to debate why we're in that situation. But many cities are in similar situations, but we have real constraints on available land. This is, so, so there's a lot of very general statements around find better alternatives, go back to the drawing board, find better sites. But I think what we have to start to get to is we have to move beyond those generalities and figure out the question is where and what can we do in a real way with the real constraints that we're under? We're not going to be magically inventing land. We're not going to magically get private landowners to do our bidding. You know, and, and also beyond the moral arguments and practical ones for affordable housing. You know, I understand those delayed housing is housing denied. Those really aren't swaying me personally at the moment because we're committed to a number. Whether it's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do, we have a number and there are severe and real penalties if we don't meet it. So what I, and then what I hear people is go back to the drawing board, do the analysis. So this is where the kind of question comes in. As I understand the analysis of publicly owned land or, or land that we own as a city, there's downtown, there's the civic center, and there's parkland. And I think, um, the staff, uh, kind of affirmed that. We have evaluated all the sites in the city. So this is going to sound like, uh, a not serious question, but it really is. I'm just curious if everybody says our analysis is flawed. We have a commitment. We have a number. We have analyzed all the parcels. So where was our analysis flawed? Making a general statement that it was flawed, I'd love to hear city staff poke holes in their own analysis a little bit. And just where, where was it, was it flawed? Where was it flawed? And I'm not asking you to defend yourself. I think that's what people are arguing is we didn't do the job right the first time. And I don't think that's true. I think the analysis was pretty darn thorough. So anyway, that's, that was a big interlude to other questions, but I was just curious about where your opinion, where, where are the flaws that we missed?
I think you stated it correctly, that we had, we have a certain amount of land that we're looking at, especially with city owned sites, the 49 sites. And so if you're working from that defined list, and then we have the criteria from HCD, we had a lot of back and forth over many months with them about that. So integrating their feedback, their comments, their concerns, um, that is, is one path that we had to be aware of. And then there were, um, the discussions among the city council, the direction we received there that we integrated as well. And then the feedback from the community at that time that we incorporated. And so I think as, as was shown in the, the attachment in the staff report, when you get into that narrow box of sites and the feedback that we had at that time, that was really the, the opportunity that seemed to work for the state, um, for the community and for the city council. And so, uh, the analysis, I mean, it took us many months, more than years to, to do all of that. And I think that was just where we landed based on trying to meet the needs of, of all the different parties that were involved.
Got it. Thanks.
So, um, following up a, a bit on that, we don't know though, that the, the city, you know, has obviously put together an RFQ. We have decided as it relates to, um, our requirement to deliver or zone for a certain number of affordable housing, housing, we have decided to concentrate a lot of that um, in the downtown parking lots. And based on this idea that like they're getting the land for free or with, with zero cost. But the flip side of it is we're asking for parking replacement, which kind of negates the, the, uh, the, the acquisition cost of zero. To what extent do we know though, that like, that it's a real ask, like right? That, that what we're going to get from developers or from those responding to the RFQ is either something that is like, well, we can't deliver that or we can deliver it, but it's, it's like 10 stories or it's something wholly out of scale. Because I, I will and just, and I'll, I'll let you ask the question and answer in the extent to which you, you can or need to frame better, more than happy to. But my concern is, is that we've put out there a unrealistic option of what the future would look like based on all of the competing factors and issues. And so, and again, I, I was here, I was on council, so I remember it's, it's some of that discussion. But I, I, I do have concerns as I did in some of those early discussions about whether this was, was, was realistic, especially given, um, the very heated discussion and concerns that it has, has resulted in in the community.
I would agree that in the RFQ, we are asking, we want the replacement parking. We've heard from the community that that is important. And I think this sort of initial step in the process is to see if the ask that we're making is unrealistic. The feedback that we would get and keeping in mind that we are on this timeline with the state to, to keep moving things forward, um, for housing production. And so, uh, at this point, I mean, I think we're relying on the market to tell us whether we've asked for too much or if it's reasonable.
And I hear you and with the, the we, um, certainly including myself in this even more so than you because I, I'm the decision maker. But on one end, we've said that like, yes, there's a possibility that our ask is unrealistic. On the other end, we've asked the state to judge and measure us and possibly penalize us based on what may not be a rational ask. And so when people say we've gotten ourselves into a trap, I think that there is some validity there. And a we, again, I'm owning this. I'm, I'm not separating myself from owning this, uh, as, as a member of this council. But, but this is the, the concern. And now we've added on, and, and one part of that is, is what has been a very, you know, visceral reaction from the community and legitimate concerns about like how you do all of this and continue to allow downtown to at least thrive at the benchmark it's currently at. And I think we'd all like to see it thrive a little bit better, um, than, than it's at. And so you can respond to that. I don't know if that was a question or a comment, so.
I think in, in the process of developing the housing element and, and looking at those sites, and based on the feedback that we were hearing at the time, estimating the replacement parking or sort of the needs of the community, to be replaced on that site became evident. Once we released the feasibility study prior to that, um, I think it was a little bit of an open question, how much parking would we, would we incorporate as replacement? So now that we have that additional clarity, I think it's become part of the process of figuring it out. But, um, at that earlier point in, in the housing development, the housing element development, I think that was unknown how much, if there would, there would be the, what parking needs would be.
That's fair. Um, and then sort of following up, I totally appreciate and, and agree that the extent to which we are going to make changes to the housing element as it's been presented to the state and approved by both the state and, and this, this body, that there would need to be a re-engagement. But that re-engagement, re-engagement with the state would only happen once a certain like threshold would be hit. Like, right, we, we can explore, like, right? If the city council can give some general direction to let's explore more based on the feedback, based on what's clearly like going to probably be more of a need for, uh, replacing parking than, than we, we thought, based on some signal we're getting on, on how like that would pencil out based on the, the percentages of affordable housing that, that we're asking for. And so my question would be like, from your perspective, what would be that threshold of which we would need to re-engage the state and, and what could be accomplished before that had to happen?
Sure. And I apologize if it wasn't clear that from this meeting, if we receive direction from council to study additional sites, we would bring that back for a study session with additional information for you to review and, and consider. We, I, I wouldn't assume that we would re-engage HCD unless after the next study session, then council says, thanks for the information. We do want to actually look at opening the housing element to modify sites. That at that point, we would need to, uh, reach out to HCD for confirmation.
But again, that modification would need to be like a, a very clear where we're making a trade off, like, right? Where we're saying we're not going to do the downtown parking lots. But, but as long as we're not saying that exactly, like, right, we can explore all our, our we want, right? HCD just wants the units, again, within the confines of furthering fair housing, like, right? They don't really care where, where, where they're at, like, right? Versus downtown versus, well, again, and I think I've been clear of my, my thoughts between the downtown civic center. But we could guess that HCD doesn't care whether they're on one side of El Camino or, or right on the other side of El Camino. Or you can say they do care. That's totally fine.
They, depending on the sites, um, HCD may want to weigh in. And I see Assistant City Attorney Mary Wagner, and she may have something more eloquent she can say.
I'm in trouble now. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Thanks, Mayor Combs, members of the council. So I just wanted to jump in and say that at some point, HCD is going to want to see the city making progress on the program and the milestones in the program to develop the downtown parking lots. As you know, the feasibility study was due last year. The RFP was to be issued, um, last year. This is one of the programs that's identified in the certification letter that we received from HCD. And those are the programs, um, that HCD pays particular attention to. So in addition to analyzing, you know, substitute sites, I want to make sure that we're clear that, you know, they are also tracking progress on, um, your program implementation.
Okay. Um, th- thank you, Assistant City Attorney Wagner. Um, and so then my final question, I'll say, um, if you, if the staff got direction from the council If you, if the staff got direction from the council to prepare an additional study session looking at additional sites, like, what would you need specifically to to make that follow up most impactful with what you came back with?
It would be helpful if council could give us direction on specific sites or certain criteria types of sites, such as land uses or any particular type of site that you want us to look at or parcel by parcel. And then the level of analysis that you would want for a follow up study session. And so there's a table in the staff report that kind of lays out three different levels of analysis we would do before bringing back those additional sites for consideration. And then we would obviously perform that research before returning to a future study session.
Okay. And then when I said, I want, this was, I promised my final question. So I I know that for some parks in the city, there is at least this idea out there to repurpose them in some way would require a voter referendum. I'm probably looking at the wrong staff member for this one. What are those parks? Is is that true for one? Like, are there some parks that if we considered them for, considered to repurpose them, it generally is likely that are possible, I should say, that a voter referendum would be required? When does that exist? If it does exist, what are the parks that we think that that might apply to?
We don't, we don't know the answer to that yet because we haven't looked at the original conveyance documents of every park in the city. But we would need to do that to to look at the original title, to look at the title reports, look at the original conveyance documents, whether or not a vote of the electorate is required to convert the use of a park to another use. Depends on how the park was originally conveyed and dedicated, either by map or by the city or by a third party. And so we have done, we have only done that inquiry as to one park in the city as of right now, per our previous council direction. But we haven't done that as to the other parks.
Right. Thank you. All right, that's for all the questions from me right there. Any additional questions are, do people want to provide some sense of, oh, sure, council member?
Yeah, I have a phase two, building on the phase one. Sorry, pageful notes. And I'll do them in chunks so that people have a chance to talk. So so I want to pivot from the why, you know, why we're here today to this idea of the civic center. And to build under Mayor Combs's idea, or not idea, but the the general direction he was heading in his last comment around parks. So my impression of studying how we got here and the various meetings, I read something from council member, ex-council member Mueller about, you know, putting some protections in place or preserve our parks and things like that. My sense is that this, by including the civic center, it could trigger a preserve our parks kind of mobilization based on some of that work that had been done before. And that would potentially be very limiting to future land use and other things. Obviously, wasn't sitting here in this chair at that time, but that was my understanding based on the research and what people told me and all those pieces. So I think what I'm struggling with is if we have a large group of residents who are who are in the protect downtown saying, we don't want to do it here. And then we have some potential kind of green space folks who want to protect our green spaces and or parks and saying not in the civic center or parks, then it feels like we're out of practical options almost. That's why it builds on the previous question of, you know, I also believe that the city's analysis was not haphazard, was not flawed. We didn't leave out some big hidden Narnia-like land that, you know, we should have considered. So it feels like there's going to be a gathering of people who don't want to see housing downtown and people who don't want to see it. If we said two acres out of Sharon Park, two acres out of Nealon Park, two acres out of Civic Center, and that amount of green space goes away, that would formulate about as much opposition as we saw, as we saw in November and further, further months. So I guess my first question, and I'd just be curious to hear what people think, is, that's, that's my assumption. As I went back and sort of read the documentation and watched the videos again. And is that the general consensus? Is that it's really, there's not much land. It's going to be green space versus downtown. And even if we take little chunks of different parks or other places, it's still going to be a fight. And I'm just curious maybe what other council members think or whether I've interpreted that wrong or. But that's my interpretation of one of the reasons why we're, why we're where we are right now. I don't know who to direct that question to, but.
I'll start into you. Like, I I think, I I don't disagree with that analysis. I I think it likely will be a a fight. But I do think you also have to look at it in the context of what are the ripple effects? One, I I do think that there is a a lot of issue which we we haven't analyzed about the extreme concentration of affordable housing in one location. And that it's all affordable housing. And all sorts of studies have been done to show that, like, actually, the best scenarios are are scenarios that present mixed income housing. And that's not something that, and so, again, we did something to check a box and maybe to make ourselves feel better. But were we creating the best community and situation? And so I do think it's a fair analysis that, like, if you're spreading it out, then 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 there is value. And and if you are, and and again, we we haven't, again, we will see what comes back from the RFQ. But there is the riddle of how you don't sort of, you know, strangle downtown in the process of a four-year construction process has just not been answered by anyone. And and so I I do think that, yes, the the council was in a bind, but there was optionality still. There there were options that existed. There were choices that were made, you know, very specifically. And and at the time, there there was a council that, again, I was on the council, so I'm I'm owning it. But there was an idea that repurposing the downtown lots was the vision that Menlo Park wanted. And so it wasn't just that, like, this is the 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 option of last resort, but that this is what we wanted. We had the Berkeley graduate students come in here and they proposed, you know, these, these ideas, I'll say, of what of what could be put on, actually, all of the downtown lots. Right? Their their vision was using all of them. And so I do think, again, like I say, that there there were hard choices, but but there certainly were choices and decisions made. And this was a decision that the council at the time thought was the vision of 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 Menlo Park in the future. And so I don't know if anyone wants to.
Well, maybe a kind of follow on question to that because I I I definitely appreciate that. And I think that was my impression as well, is it wasn't, we were, we were straitjacketed into a certain direction. It was, there were, there were trade offs that were made, just like, just like we're experiencing right now. I I also think that when I look at Civic Center as an option and the amount of Civic Center, if we if we now take the green space aspect out of that and just look at the Civic Center as a site, you know, there's, there's the discussion about surface parking, which I don't think size is the only consideration. If it's not a sort of trade downtown for Civic Center surface parking, there's a lot more considerations. The admin buildings, you know, we're talking about big price tags for parking and other things. But I don't know, 30 million each for an admin building times four, we're still talking probably 120 to 150 million. We'd have to do a bond. I mean, there's, there's complications in trying to say, not downtown, just figure out the Civic Center. It's, it's really not that binary. And the the part that I think would be tricky is the other point that was brought up around, that Councilmember Wise brought up around HCD and the complications if we are considering a substitution of this size and complexity, would they allow us to do it? Would would we have to pass multiple tests? Would a bond have to pass? And then the clock has run out on that other commitment that we are faced with. I think that's the other thing I want to make sure people understand is this is, this is not a fake commitment without repercussions and serious penalties. It's, it's, it's something that HCD is paying a lot of attention to, as I understand it. So I I I guess I'm I'm just making a general comment that s- some of the points that were made earlier around figure it out, Civic Center is the answer, go do it, you didn't do good analysis. Like, that's, it's not that simple. So, you know, and it's just as expensive and just as complex, and there's no guarantee of success. So beyond the vision that the mayor was talking about, there's real complexity behind the Civic Center. It's not just looking at the size of the parking lots and going, that looks like it's about the same size as downtown parking lots. So I I just wanted to kind of bring that into the conversation as well. Not an, not an easy substitution for many reasons.
I would agree with you, Councilmember Schmidt. The only thing I would add, and one of the ways in which I am looking at this, is that we may be in a position in the not too distant future where we are forced to explore other options. Because some of the assumptions that we have made about what we're willing to accept in density, what we're willing to accept in terms of affordable housing mix, what we're, what we are willing to accept in terms of parking replacement may present us with an option of which we don't want to pursue. And again, and we, as in, like, three votes on this council, I agree. And so I I do think, while I hear you, like, all other options present many challenges and complexities, it 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 may be the case that we are in a position where where we where we might have to explore to some degree what what those other options look like.
Yeah, I would, I want to agree. I I think that, but I I would urge us to say that that would happen as a result of the RFQ and developers not coming back with things that meet our needs and stuff. Because my concern, which which I think I have probably gone too far down this rabbit hole, I will fully admit. But I've been looking at builders remedies because I've got a builders remedy project in District Three. And so I've tried to learn a lot about it. If we try to halt the brakes on downtown and we don't try to fulfill our commitment and we inadvertently trigger builders remedy because of that, that's, that's more concerning than we don't, exactly what the mayor said, which is we're forced to explore other options because what we got back wasn't really, didn't really meet our needs. And I think we can still stay on the right side of HCD if we show good faith that we have tried to fulfill our commitments. Those commitments beyond, for reasons beyond our control, were not fulfillable. Because the builders remedy, I, builders remedy is not an idea. I think we're lucky that we had a small window and there were only a few builders remedies projects in the city. I found out the other day that Saratoga, which is about 31,000 people, so comparable in size, has 22 builders remedies projects. And that's on private land scattered all across the city. We would lose complete control of what gets built in the city if we had a window where that happened. And I know that's a little doom and gloomy. I don't mean it to sound that way, but it's, it's a real repercussion of us not following through on the commitments that we've already made. And I don't think the state is showing any willingness to bend on that as a, as a consequence. So I I I just want to agree with what you said is I can see us in a scenario where we're forced to explore other options. But I would only want to ever do that when we have done our best to fulfill our commitments and it's not a reasonable set of proposals that we get back. Voluntarily jumping into builders remedy is, you know, not a great scenario.
I I would only add that it's sort of binary. There is a process of exploring additional options and closing off current options. So I would totally agree with you that, like, you wouldn't want to close off current options unless you really felt that that's the only route for you to go. But you might want to proactively explore additional options without closing off any current options. And and again, not engendering, you know, any any pushback. And so that's what I, for me, that that's the, if it's sort of framing the possibility of, again, if this is a discussion and we're sort of sharing with folks where, how that council landed, then and if that's the value, then then I think that that's valid value. But if the purpose is also to possibly actually provide some future direction, and again, if there is support for that or not, I don't know. But then that is, to me, how it would be framed is that we're not, we're not sort of saying that we're not going to do anything other than to explore possible other options. And again, that comes with cost and trade off. Staff has to devote time. Time is finite, so they're not doing other stuff. But then we could, as a council, decide that 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 is, that is worth it.
Yeah, completely, completely agree. I think the point that you made about we have to continue with the current process because the penalties could potentially be very severe, while in addition, potentially going further to explore these things and understanding the opportunity cost and the sunk time cost and all the other things that 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 would engender. I I I think it's worth doing because we still want the community to know that we're listening and we understand their concerns. But the the only pushback on the general statements of, you know, find something else, that's really not an option. We we, we can explore other opportunities, but we have to do that in parallel with the process we're already on. So I'm feeling pretty strongly that that's, that's one of the overriding messages is is we could potentially do both. And it would be interesting to understand in more detail from staff, you know, the things, there were some things that were outlined that we felt like would be opportunity cost. Pieces of the housing element that wouldn't get worked on, pieces in the environmental justice element, other projects. Are there a handful of things that you would say are really critical that we might miss out on if we asked to do this study session on other sites? Is there, are there two or three examples that you feel like are really essential to the operation of the city over the next year that would be an opportunity cost?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Deanna Chow, Community Development Director. And so I think a lot of, has been said about opportunity cost and staff's time is finite. We have, the city council has recognized our housing as a priority. Our environmental justice element, necessarily, has been raised as a priority and something that we'll be considering in upcoming goal setting session. We are bringing back to the city council and that the Housing Commission tomorrow are annual progress report on our housing element. And it does identify what is our progress on each of the specific programs. I will say some of the things we have been delayed on because of our additional time that it took to receive certification from the, from HCD. And so we are playing a bit of a catch up. And so some of the things that could be delayed are continuing to work with our housing team on our anti-displacement strategy. We're working with them on the BMAR guidelines. I know we have interest in advancing our accessory dwelling units, whether it's the ordinance or making a more robust webpage and community outreach. And so those are a few things that I know are on our housing element. I know the city council last year also looked at other items and such as looking at single family zoning. So those are some of the things, just in the sort of housing element bucket, not to mention. not to mention the environmental justice elements, which certainly has some of that overlap. But we are the same staff that that does the the work.
Not to put anyone on the spot, but it's been a great dialogue, Councilmember Schmidt, between me and you. The two of us can land anywhere we want, but that 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 won't pass muster on a five person body. So if if there's someone else who wants to chime in or not, that's totally. I mean, for me, I I think, I I guess I would beg the question like, is there some interest of giving direction, being very broad, not getting into specifics, of of exploring what additional sites are revisiting sites would look like? I'll be I I would be open to giving such direction. So I'll I'll like sort of leave that there and bring it to the dais and see if if there is, you know, any interest from anyone else. Because if if not, we don't have to spend additional time on it. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. And this is as a follow up question from actually a question you just asked, Mayor Combs. I'm just thinking about the the update that the Housing Commission is going to receive. I have not read the report yet. That's one piece. The other is if we do anything differently than the council has already agreed to do as far as the housing element programs, would that delay exploring other sites? Would that delay any of the anti-displacement policies and programs? Would that delay any of the BMR policy updates?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I think it depends on the extent of the work. But I I could see a situation in where additional analysis on the sites could potentially delay some of the work that we just described, yes.
Okay, thank you. One thing that I've made clear, and this even goes back to the discussion around BMR funds. My interest is keeping Menlo Park residents in Menlo Park. And also, and I see that anti-displacement policy as a potential to me that would have a positive impact on our current residents. And then also thinking about our BMR policy, we have units coming online that are either not affordable or inaccessible to folks who are interested in renting one of those units. And at this time, I'll just take a moment to talk about all of the development in District One. I know there are a few comments and even something on CCIN regarding putting more affordable housing. Bellhaven neighborhood is .6 square miles. It is the smallest residential area that I'm aware of in the city that has the highest the high population. So Anton Menlo, which is in District One, which I called the north of 101, there are 395 units. And if I'm wrong, staff, please correct me. Elon, which is now Rowan, has 146 units. Menlo Portal, which I believe is Visera, has 335 units. Menlo Uptown, which has a new name, has 483 units. And the future Willow Village will have 1,730 units. Now, as far as the housing that is closer to the Bellhaven neighborhood, there are 195 units at 777 Hamilton, 140 units at Gateway Rising, and 90 units at Sequoia Bellhaven. That's 425 units. So I believe that we've absorbed enough units regardless if AB 617 existed or not, further affirming fair housing. I believe we have absorbed our units because all of them have not been completed. And when they are completed, it will be over 3,000 units in one area of the city, in one area of the city. So it needs to be shared. I know it's uncomfortable to hear, but it needs to be shared. We're not putting anything else on the north side of 101.
I I a couple of things. One is definitely not uncomfortable to hear. I couldn't agree more. Part of the reason I don't bring up District One is I'll be very clear and I'll stick with this is I don't support any of this being discussed for District One. Even though I'm a new council member, I think that was the right decision, remains the right decision for for many reasons that Councilmember Taylor knows much better than I do. It feels like this is going to be, and I also wanted to echo what Mayor Combs said. I feel like a bit more of looking at the analysis for Civic Center and potentially some of our larger parks is worthwhile. I understand that last statement is going to potentially get some folks unhappy with looking at parks, but we are literally only talking about a study session to figure out whether those options do exist and whether they will be viable. I guess my question back to staff is if we did give that guidance, it was a little hard to interpret from the table on next steps. I'd just be interested in which which one of these we'd be committing to. So if we were going to study the Civic Center and parcels that are broken apart potentially in the Civic Center, which of those three timelines are we committing to? You know, basic, moderate, or comprehensive? And then if we added in, say, three parks with carve outs, I I would assume we're talking at least a year of study or that's just an assumption. So I'm I'm curious to take the mayor's question a little further. What are we committing to as far as timeline goes if we said Civic Center plus three parks?
I think that would potentially be more of the moderate or above analysis just because as the city attorney mentioned, there would need to be some analysis of whether or not this would need to come to a vote. So we need to draw some of those reports data to get that information. And that can take some time as well as providing just an overview of the zoning, drafting up site sheets that could potentially be in the housing element if we receive additional direction after a future study session. But I think you're looking at the for those particular sites, it would be sort of in the four to six month or more range.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And for the record, and I do remember when the park preservation ordinance came to the city council, and I stated it then, I'm not interested in building on our parks. So I don't need an ordinance to protect our parks because I'm not supporting any development of our parks because we need our open space, especially if we have multiple development projects, SRI being one of them, coming to the city.
Quick question, and this isn't really direct at you. I think it was a general question I wrote down and didn't ask. So Civic Center a park? I mean, what do we I know, sorry, it's but but to your point about not developing a park, I think it's a little fuzzy and I know there's Burgess Park. But I would argue this is sort of green space and a park. Is that how we see it?
I'll I'll let staff, but we like literally, I think, discuss this for an hour. That's a very question. So I'll I'll let staff weigh in.
It's it's all one parcel. But I think that there is a distinction in the general plan for the land uses. Part of it is shown as public facilities. And then Burgess Park is shown as open space conservation, I believe. But the zoning overall is considered public facilities. So part of this, when we were talking about how much analysis do we need to do? I think there's a little bit of a mixed history there that we need to dig into and get some more of that clarity to provide to you.
Great, thanks.
No, no, I was I was actually just going to acknowledge your voice.
Thank you. So I believe this conversation is premature, as has been discussed on the dais. I think that I personally am very eager to see the responses to the RFQ and to see what is proposed, how many we get. And I think that at that point, there will be a lot of discussion around that, whatever we see, because I think that we did have, we do have a huge ask. And I think that it will be interesting to see how various groups respond to that and make it feasible for what they believe they can deliver. And then what the city, what the council, staff, community, businesses, all of us think about these responses and about these proposals? And are they something that would work with our downtown and hopefully enhance our downtown? Or is it something that is not viable? And at that point, I feel that that's the time when we should be discussing any future sites that we may or may not want to look at. Right now, I really would like to continue along on this path, do as much as we can on the programming. I echo Councilmember Taylor's desire to see as much as we can with the BMR guidelines, with the anti-displacement and other programs that will really help our community. And we have put out this RFQ. And I I I believe that any discussion, any decisions are premature until we see those responses, which are the responses are coming back. March 31 is the deadline. And then I know that staff will need some time to just process them. But we should be seeing something quite soon.
Councilmember, why do you want to?
I agree with Betsy, so.
Okay, so and I just want to do a double check. Councilmember Taylor, are you aligned with where Councilmember Nash is at?
Yes.
Okay, so um, so that was suggested there is not enough support to provide staff direction to explore options. Appreciating, given the Vice Mayor full due that she said that not that she would not be willing to have that discussion, but that it was premature to give that direction now to have that discussion. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that that's where where the Vice Mayor and at least two other council members are at. And so I since we we're not going to be giving, it doesn't look like we're going to be giving any direction tonight that's contrary to direction that has been given in the past. Just want to, since you initiated this item, Councilmember Schmidt, want to give you the opportunity to close it out or if there are any additional remarks you want to make.
Yeah, thank you. I I appreciate the suggestion of doing the study session and doing it parallel. But just like the Vice Mayor said, I I feel like because it's so close, this session to me was about making sure people really understood we are listening. We heard you. We're not sort of bulldozing over the response that came out since November. I think maybe for me, it would be helpful to recap just so that can be clearly communicated. So the RFQs are coming in, the the submissions are coming in. They do not commit us to accepting any of them. They may fall short, as the mayor said. And then we'll have a different set of discussions. But we'll still be on the right side of the HCD's process. We won't be penalized for not making progress, which is one of, I think, everybody's concerns. And then in very short order, we'll evaluate those. And I would assume that if they don't meet our needs, as the mayor said, we'll be forced to explore other options. And so the study session preparation, the sort of that Tom mentioned could kick in, right? And so the way I'm looking at the process is RFQ submissions, evaluate their appropriateness. If they don't meet our needs, we start a study session of other locations. We can have the debate about parks and green spaces again if we need to. But that feels like the next steps in the process. And it's it's not nine months away. It's not a year away. It's it's all in fairly short order, it sounds like. So that's that's my takeaway. And hopefully, this has provided some use to get everybody on the same page and see the the constraints that we're faced with as well. Because that's really all this was is is a way for us to kind of step back and cut through the big reports and the technical language and in simple language, say, this is kind of where we're at and we're we're trying to follow a process that we're constrained by and sharing some of those constraints with the public. So anyway.
Although I do want to make sure, because I think you said something that leads me to correct myself. I I gave the impression, just so staff knows like where the actual support is, that like there were three council members who didn't want to give direction to move forward. There are actually four council members that I was the only one who wanted to give direction to explore other options. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear for for the record because I didn't want you to include you with me when you clearly were not.
I would have been open either way. I I think if if it felt like we could do it in parallel. But when Betsy, when Councilmember Nash said it's only like a month away, then it clicked in my brain that it felt like extra work because of the timeline. So I I was flexible either way, but I think it makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
We decided.
You're totally sure. Vice Mayor.
I was wondering if staff could explain a little bit, once the RFQs come in, it actually will not be just we like him or we don't like him. It's really a starting place to have discussions, assuming that something is in the ballpark. Is there any more you can add to that?
Yeah, I I think the way you've described it is accurate. Once those submissions come in, we would do a review to obviously make sure they meet the the we would make a recommendation based on whether they meet the basic criteria that were laid out, the number of units, the replacement parking, those things that are in the RFQ. And then I think we would recommend some sort of rank based on the the internal evaluation for your consideration and then bring them to you, all of them, for your discussion approval.
Yeah, I would only add to that, the you did the qualifier like those that that met the criteria. I I would make sure that like we, and again, everything is public records. But I want to make sure we see everything because I've heard some rumblings that we're going to get some stuff that doesn't meet our criteria because our criteria is not 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 realistic. And so and so just want to make sure that like it's it's clear that like everything that gets submitted, everyone will see.
Yes, it will be completely transparent. We would we would indicate those in the staff report, but you would still see all of them.
Yes.
And to take that comment a little bit further, we actually have an opportunity to accept something that does not meet. For example, if they do not have 345 units of the low affordable housing, we actually could proceed with something. It would just be that we were, we would make a decision to do that. But we don't have to reject it just because they don't meet those minimum requirements, correct?
Right, it's at council's discretion.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll close out this study session. Thank you all for that discussion and dialogue. And thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, for for bringing us to the council. With that, we'll move on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council and staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the information items. City Corcoran, do we have any public comments for the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide a comment on item H1, city council agenda topics for March, if you are in person completing a speaker card at the table and returning to me at the clerk's desk. If you are on Zoom, go ahead and engage that hand feature. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational item H1. Looks like I have one raised hand. So our speaker will be Dean Levin.
Yes, thank you very much. So with regard to the informational item about the upcoming city council calendar. I have a couple of comments and a question. So the comments have to do with the upcoming review of the housing element progress report. I was glad to hear a couple of council members talk about their continued prioritization of revisiting the BMR policy and of the prioritization of the anti displacement policies, which are both important in the housing element and were a high priority in the environmental justice element. So looking forward to that coming forward. The other comment about that topic is I was glad to hear somebody, council member or staff, I can't remember who, mentioned in the previous discussion relating to the housing element about the state law that calls for a formidably furthering fair housing. Somebody had mentioned that the there was a federal executive policy that is has been reversed, but we still have a state law in place, which is you know, continues to be state law. The question that I had has to do with something that is related to housing, but I'm not seeing in the agenda that seems inextricably related to the housing. And that has to do with a study of parking and access, especially for the downtown. I heard staff mention that there had been comments about how much parking that people want, and therefore that answers the question. And that is pretty concerning to me, given that Menlo Park has you know, compared to some other cities in our area, very, very unmanaged parking, and the lack of convenience has a lot to do with how little that we manage our parking. And so in order to have a better use as we're doing infill development in whatever location, looking at parking management strategies seems absolutely critical. And my understanding was that Menlo Park had been you know, funded to do a study of parking and access. And so I am hopeful that that is still considered to be coming forward, and I am a little bit puzzled as to why it is not on display in the city council upcoming agenda items. I would like to put that forward as a question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, saying no for their hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Clerk Karen. Is there, I didn't quite understand Ms. Levin's question. And so I or else I would direct staff to answer them, but I can't. If if you didn't, we can follow up with her like offline, but but that it was muffled at times, and so I didn't get it. But if someone did get it more clearly, I want, I think there is a response, then feel free.
Yes, I'm happy to follow. If she wants to follow up with me, I'm happy to then redirect it after this meeting, but my basic response would be that the city staff, city is indeed working on the study that she's talking about. That said, the timing of when it's coming forward, the look ahead is for the next month, and it's not coming forward to the city council by the end of March. So it's a yes, it's underway. Timing is it's not coming forward in March. It would be sometime after that. I I don't have that estimate at this point.
All right. Okay, cool. And that was the only public comment, correct, Clerk Karen? All right. Well, with that, we'll we'll adjourn.